Good evening and welcome to the regularly scheduled SLI Board of Education meeting for Monday, July 20th, 2020. This meeting is a meeting of the Board of Education in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business, and it's not considered a public meeting. There is a time for public participation during the meeting as indicated in the agenda. Mr. Sumner, roll call please.
Mr. Flack?
Here.
Mr. Sell?
Here.
Mrs. Gingrich?
Here.
Mrs. Voorhees?
Here.
Mr. Huber?
Here.
Would you join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Just to adjutant motions, set the agenda.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Before we vote on that, we want to talk about the addendum that was put out there today. One, two, three, four, five, six items, and we wanted to add one additional item. That would be Emily Shavoni going to full-time. She was .6 FTE at CES. She now will be full-time, split between CES and IC. IC being Immaculate Conception School. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Ken. We have a motion, but Mr. Huber is seconded by Mrs. Voorhees. Roll call please.
Mr. Huber?
Yes.
Mrs. Voorhees?
Yes.
Mr. Flack?
Yes.
Mrs. Gingrich? Mr. Sell?
Yes. Mr. Sumner, you may continue.
Share, louder, Will.
Oh, I'll try. And you bet.
You bet's a reception of public.
Gotcha. Reception of public, I do see that... Tressi, you're signed up. Absolutely. Because CEA President, so you have a floor.
Right, so on behalf of our new President, the term started in June, we just want to thank the Board and Dr. Penn working with us on making these plans for reopening. We've done lots of weekly Zoomings with Dr. Penn. Between John, myself, and Tressi, we were able to reach out to all the board members and kind of get their points and hear their opinions and expressions, and we appreciate having that dialogue and open communication and respecting each other's opinions and such. So we appreciate the work that you've given us the last almost two months now. So we just wanted to say thank you.
Sure.
Your thank you.
Yes, appreciate it.
Need a motion for the consensus agenda.
Sorry. Yes, we need a motion for the consensus agenda, looking at two things at once. I'll make that motion.
One second.
Thank you.
Okay, first thing, I'm asking you to approve the minutes of the June 15th, 2020 regular and the June 22nd, 2020 special board meetings. Approve the June 2020 financial summary report showing revenues of 1.37 million and expenditures of 3.71 million. Approve the investment control report for June 2020 with an overall balance of $10.2 million. Approve the SM2 report for June of 2020. Approve the checks written in June for 3.467 million. Number six is a resolution to approve participation and authorization for the Southwestern Ohio EPC to advertise and receive bids on the board's behalf for the cooperative purchase of a school bus. This resolution does not obligate the board to purchase a bus. It just says because we're a member of the EPC, they do all the bid specs and accept the bids, and if we decide to buy one later, we can do that. Item seven, approve the TriStar rear compact insurance coverage for fiscal year '21 through the Ohio State plan to Staley Insurance Agency at a cost of $27,406. Item eight, accept donations, $1,000 from Mercer Savings Bank, giving Mission June 2020 to the TriStar building for making PPE. And then 194 cases from Danone MVP Dairy to Slime Schools for the summer feeding program. Any questions?
Yes, real quick, we were exploring the possibility of a school bus, I would imagine, but we feel that there's a need. We're looking at that purchase.
We have three buses with high mileage on them. Greg Amsfeld, a transportation supervisor, did write a grant that was available out there, so there is $39,000 out there that we could use towards a purchase of a bus if we see that need for this next year. The average price of a bus, you're talking just over $85,000 total.
Great.
Do we do some of our vans, pickup trucks, things like that through the same combined consortium?
We can, yeah.
Do we usually get quotes locally first along with those, or how's that?
Those are not part of the EPC. Now, they would have the opportunity to do that. We looked at it, and we have actually priced that, and for a van, you're talking about $20,000 more than what the EPC price is. So they are pleased that we do have them service our vehicles here locally.
As long as we keep asking them and find out if it does or does not work. Thank you.
We'll move on to the Assistant Superintendent Report. Number one, asking you to approve to accept the resignation due to retirement of Sharon Sharp. She is a custodian currently at the middle school of TriStar. That will be effective December 31st, 2020, and that will be after 29 years of service from Sharon. Next three items, we're asking you to accept the resignations of Jen Morrison, Ashley Klingshorn, and Cindy Freeman. Number five, we're asking you to approve the hire of Caleb Steike, Administrative Technology Assistant. He has completed his probationary period. And then we have a couple change of contracts. Sanara Yehy, Teacher Assistant with Head Start. She's going from 180 days to 186 days, and six hours per day to eight hours per day. Jane Mauer, Teacher Assistant with Head Start, going from 161 days to 186 days, her hours remain the same. Number eight, asking you to approve a 60-day probationary contract for Emily Miller. She's a Teacher Assistant at the primary school. Number nine, asking you to approve a stipend payment of $500 per month for Marcy Wellman, Administrative Assistant, effective back to May, for helping us cover the absence of Connie Rhodes. The addendum has items 10, 11. Goes all the way, 10, 11, 12, 13. Those include 60-day probationary contracts for Shelby Plyman, Ashley Braun, Amber Sculz, and Alyssa Delna Mollenkamp. Those will all be Teacher Assistants over at the primary buildings. We're planning on using student wellness and well-being funds to pay for those positions. So as long as we have that money coming in, we'll have the funds to pay for those positions. Those will be all be new positions. Yes. Deb's question was if those would be added positions. Under the Superintendent's Report, the first three items, approving a one-year contract for Jamie Lefel, Speech and Language Pathologist, at the middle and high schools. Number two, approve a one-year contract for Brian Hess as a new automotive teacher at TriStar. Number three, approve a one-year contract for Alyssa Van Overstratton. She's a new cybersecurity teacher out of TriStar. We're asking you to approve a change of contract for Haley Thomas, Speech and Language Pathologist, from half-time at IC to full-time with Head Start and preschool. Number five, we're asking you to approve the extended service contracts of the folks that are listed on the agenda.
Have these changed, Dr. Ken?
Those are all the same. Guess the one that was added, though, would be the bottom one with the new VoEgg teacher?
Yeah.
That's an equivalent number of days to the VoEgg teachers out of TriStar. Under number six, the department heads as listed, and we had one under the addendum, Derek Wedding will be the Department Head for High School Social Studies. Following that, letter B under six, we have the grade-level chairs. Included under those are also the IAT, Intervention Assistance Team, members.
Quick question about Department Chair, Dr. Ken. So Mr. Wedding will be taking Aaron Bowser's position, is that correct?
Yes, Aaron Bowser did fill that position for us last year.
Okay, and Department Head A, is that just classification of some kind?
That is correct, yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Those are all under Class 8 in the contract. The DLT members are included there, and a couple advisor positions. And then letter C lists the advisors for those supplemental contracts. As you see, none of those are Class 8, so those are all from different classes in the contract. Under number seven, we have the People Activity Program contracts. Again, these are all just one-year contracts. Number eight, the supplemental contracts. That would include the one change there. You see Andy Weiss as head varsity baseball coach with 12 years of experience.
For Mr. Weiss, were all of those years in Slime?
Yes. Approve the following personnel, People Activity Programs under number nine. And then number 10, we have an addendum with the stipend payments for those individuals. That was $100 per day for each of the three days that they spent this summer. And number, item 11 was newly added one for Emily Shavoni, going from .6 FTE at CES to a full-time, splitting between CES and IC.
Let's see, 10, 11.
You just added that.
Still anything to add? Dr. Tressi, Mr. Sumner, you okay?
All right.
Anything to add before going to executive session?
Though we've got some resolutions here to go over.
Sure.
The first resolution, as Tressi and Andy were talking about, working cooperatively, we looked again at our Calamity Day Alternative Make-Up Plan, the Blizzard Bags and the E-Days. They voiced last year, the CEA did, that they want to keep those separate from our remote learning plan, so we do have that in place. So if we would use five Calamity Days, then we would have these three E-Day slash Blizzard Bag Days that we could use. So again, this is separate from the remote learning plan, but would be pretty much the carbon copy of the plan that we've had the last several years.
Dr. Penn, is there any thought of, or is it that we learned anything going to remote that could make Blizzard Bags in the future more opportunities to touch base with students as we incorporate technology? Or is that just making it too difficult to snow day and parents?
Actually, with our training and working on Google Classroom and incorporating that, that will help both these Blizzard Bag E-Days as well as the remote learning plan. So yes, that certainly would be advantageous.
I've got a question for the representatives here for... The remote learning that we experienced for three months, did, were teachers required to, or did they keep in touch with parents through the whole thing?
That was building principals, and they, we were required to touch base with parents, yes.
And so did you actually record and log in so that I got ahold of 70% of my parents?
I kept track of the time that I spent, and like I would make a list of the people I did not get ahold of, but you made your attempt. But, yeah. We were done when we made our attempts. It was documented, documented, yes.
I was just curious.
And both of us helped Zoom sessions. Like my team met weekly with our, you know, as many kids as we could, so we averaged about 30 out of 70 kids on there. And those who we didn't, we used our remind app, we used, you know, phone calls, we touched base. Some of our aides in our buildings made phone calls for us.
We had class downs, though, that we communicated a lot through also.
Great. Go ahead.
Cory, do you, did you have any thoughts on, you know, the way that it was working with the E-Days and, you know, touching and connecting to the parents?
Yeah, my building had been exploited last year already, and we knew some changes even before the COVID got in. We wanted to present a more online front for our parents, you know. Going, you know, to the website, printing, you know. We just did a funny survey in our staff meeting one time, how many people even own a printer, you know, so not very many even own a printer at home. So we knew the days of parents logging on during those E-Days and printing off packages, you know. You know, we had to make it more feasible for parents. So we knew going into this year that even as special parent, I shouldn't speak for the building, but at least in my building, that we were going to present a more online front for parents. Now with all of our trainings in our Google Classroom, we'll be able to make that pretty seamlessly.
And then a final question, I have Dr. Ken. So the Calamity Day Resolution, where did this actually come from? I mean, I see the, the section, this is Ohio Advice Code.
Right, it came from the BASSA, the Association Superintendent's. Actually had the draft plan that they set out there, and it's pretty much been the same plan over the last three years.
Great.
The second resolution, we're asking you to approve to adopt or revise Slime City Schools' mission and beliefs statement. That was one that was worked on through DLT, the District Leadership Team, and also was encouraged by our administrators who have been going through the OLI4 program.
Could you explain briefly, I mean, what's the big difference between this one and the one that we've added place for many, many years?
Cory, since you've been involved in that process, I'll put you on the hot seat here as well.
That's okay. Are you specifically talking about the mission statement?
Yeah.
Well, we wanted to be a little bit more direct and in tune with common practices of teaching, so I think ours was a little bit more vague, you know, in the past, and we made that a little bit more precise to exact things that we're going to hold our standards to in the classroom, in the buildings, in the district-wide, you know, so that our parents know exactly what kind of education they're going to get. So we're, I would say, detail and specific.
I would imagine this is going to be here in classroom?
Yep.
Good thing.
Yep, definitely.
The next resolution, the state has asked us to approve a reopening plan and also a face covering plan. Not that we have to have these approved by ODE, but we do need to have them approved by the Board locally. So I have presented copies of those documents in front of you here. For the reopening plan, we are planning on coming back face-to-face with the students, where we will be picking them up via our bus routes. Students from Grades 3 on up are recommended to wear face coverings. Staff members required to wear face coverings. The state has given us a list of exceptions. We also did work with the Mercer County Health Department, Jason Metzger, to be exact. Great, great gentleman to work with. I'm not sure if there are specific questions in relation to either of those at this point.
I know there was a lot of conversation pertaining to scanning protectors before coming in, so we're leaving that up to the parents. Is there, do we already own the scanning tools, the detectors, for taking temperatures for students? Do we have those?
We are purchasing more of those. Right now, most of our temporal scanners, we actually have to touch them. So those have been ordered, Jeff Edelman has ordered.
So we don't have any infrared scanners that you don't physically touch them?
Correct, but this time we do not have any of those that I'm aware of, and if we do?
No, I think you were saying back in June, we were ordering them, were we ordering them for this coming school?
Correct.
Are you ordering the ones that have to touch or the scan ones?
The scan, the don't-touch ones.
Okay.
Yes, someone will be holding it, but not...
The same person, yeah.
Correct.
So is it our intention, are we going to work towards doing scanning protectors as the kids come in, or are we still putting it all?
We are not, we were meeting firm officials this afternoon from Wilson Health, and they too are under that same feel, that the families need to be doing that at home, that we don't want those kids coming to school. We don't want those kids hopping on the bus if they're already positive, they're running a temp. Please, rest of the parents, so please keep them at home.
The obvious question I would have, excuse me, I would have that is, what do we do when that doesn't happen? So mom's running late, kid's running late, kid hops on the bus with a 102 and is off to school. That, that's my concern.
Right, we'll be doing classroom check observations to see if there is a student who's coughing continuously or looks like, complains they don't feel well. We will certainly go through that process and check them. If they're showing those symptoms, we will also need to direct them to get in touch with their doctors, make connections with the Health Department. The Health Department will be the ones that are doing the contact tracing, so they will come in, check in with the family, who has that child been in contact with. We'll need to have assigned seats on the bus, assigned seats in the classrooms, in the cafeteria, so when somebody does test positive, we're able to go back and trace those people who have been in that closest proximity to them.
I couldn't hear all of what Mr. Huber was asking, but we are going to get thermometers, and they're going to be used for students coming in?
And staff members. Now, not all the students coming in. If we have a student come in and say, oh, I forgot to take my temperature at home, yes, we can take their temperature at school, but we prefer that it happens at home. So if someone is sick, they don't come to school, they're not infecting other students. We'd rather that they keep it at home.
Will the bus drivers be equipped with the thermometer scanners also?
No.
Okay, because they're going to be your first line of contact.
Right.
Will a child, will a student have verification of 98.4 into someone checking at the door or checking first period or something like that?
They can do that check during first period when they're taking attendance, yes.
What's the downside to having our first-period teachers doing that? I'm thinking of, my daughter was a first grader, her teacher, every single kid had an handshake, and they'd do a hug and a fist bump. That took five minutes for every kid to walk in the room. There'll be none of those this year, unfortunately. What's the, the 2020 would be the temperature check. What's our fear? My concern is this, you might have 80% of parents, our, the flags at home routine will be take temperatures, do that kind of thing every morning, but if I'm a parent and I know my kid's going to have their temperature taken, and I might be halfway to work when I get my phone call because I didn't take it that day, and they just had 101, I'm for sure going to take it at home, because then I can call grandma, then I can get arrangements versus the massive inconvenience of the school nurse or school secretary calling me and saying, hey, anything, shoot, I shouldn't have taken it that day. I do understand that ranch it frozen works, but it seems like this will be a year for ranch being frozen works.
As was last year.
Well, yeah, unfortunately.
Are we going to have, are we going to have enough scanners, thermometers to do?
To have one in every classroom? We did not plan on ordering that many, no.
When you couple them, and if you build, you know, a coupled inability.
Yes.
I mean, as quick as that fist bump, I think that's what we did with the sixth grader. You graded your student, it'd be real easy to, who's scanning you in and see that everybody has done it. We just, I think it would make a second, you know, that's that layer of protection in, and it would make the staff and teachers who have to work with these kids a little bit, you know, not have acronyms. Okay, we're going to trust you just went at home. A big concern, and I know the three of them.
It was on our CEA survey, we did a survey, and it came up very high that teachers would like to see temperature checks.
How's your membership feeling about, because they're going to be the ones administering said, in a lot of cases?
And that's what it came up on the question, like, we needed to do it during first period, or in the K3 or K6 building, do it in that homeroom time when you have, you know, green it, because if it's the scanner ones, it's two-second split or the scan, and do that.
I would even be probably in favor of having, at the high school, seven teachers at the entrances.
Or you're classified A, because we talked about that.
Right, and just, as you come into the building, you've got seven different people, and then you won't do it again for the rest of the year. There'll be...
Maybe like, we have bus duties and stuff for our grade tiers, it'd be some kind of a rotation that each building principal would have to, you know, do, and if teachers who don't have a homeroom in class, like K3 or K6 can help out, like, they go, like, Steve Glahal or my special teachers, they could help out, and that, but just that extra layer of protection, and that's what a lot of our members, even they had a fire where they could write things or ask questions, and the thing was, if they had to do the temperature checks, they were okay, they want to.
But if you wait until the students come into the building and they've gone to their locker, and they've talked to everybody around them on the way, and then check their temperatures, we're a little behind.
Dr. didn't talk about not having them there because of COVID.
But I'm wondering, but you need to, do we need to have the mask on in the hallways? Like anytime that they're outside of the rooms, do we need to make that more of a specification that during their transition times, that they do have face coverings?
The problem with that is, and I agree with the problem with that, is that you go into class and you take off your mask, and there's 26 kids in there, and it's 104.
Well, just to put this a little better perspective, I talked to Jason, the data department, there have only been 20 children, say, under 20 years, 20 years old, throughout this whole time, that have been proven to have COVID.
But see, I'm concerned about, I'm concerned about the English teacher that's...
Right. I would hope they would be more...
But we don't know if they're carriers. They're saying that kids are carriers of it, but not even know it.
Sure.
Because they're not sick. The older English teacher, she's going to get it.
Right, they may be sick. They might not be sick now.
Then he also said over 50% of these cases that have been tested positive don't have COVID, so...
That's true.
What would be the potential from, from a practicality standpoint of adding something in the beginning and saying for nine weeks, we're going to try temperature taking? I mean, it's going to be, again, the year of, let's try something, and again, I do think we need to, there's...
I just don't want us to get in a false sense of security.
No, but there is, there is a, something communicating to our parents as well as our staff, hey, we are trying to go above and beyond for this. So there is that, we are trying to at least catch it, and I think of that one student who's cooking at 102 all day that no one catches, and they kind of walk around the whole building, and then they go home, and then parents catch, and then maybe do have it, and then we have to call back, and it's like, well, they went to 10 different classrooms with 300 different kids in the lunchrooms and stuff. If we can catch one, there is a, there's a compounding reality to how much money in subsidies did you just save, or how many kids didn't have to have the Health Department called, or, that, that's kind of my thought, is that you can add those multiple layers.
I'd just rather err on the side of caution.
Me too.
At least at first, again, what we keep learning about this, I have a feeling that all of us in nine weeks at our, say, November board meeting are going to have a lot more knowledge, good or bad, about this virus.
And I'm afraid if we don't, we're going to have a very short school year, if we don't, we don't start testing.
The latest study I just saw today, they're showing that 10, 10 and above passive just as efficiently as adults do. just as efficiently as adults do. The other thing is, the studies that they have done on children have been in school buildings with six hundred of students for seven hours a day. So you can't, you can't rest on that because we don't know for sure. The school building, do you know what I mean? They, they, we, we just don't have the data to support that, that kids don't pass it. Because they are, they're finding out new things all the time. It's, and they don't have studies in a school situation. Why is this any different than a prison, a nursing house or a campus? And it probably works with little kids. We don't know anything about it yet. Yeah. So if you can check them at the door, they put that, to me, that would make me wonder. They check them at the door, don't put it on the teachers or let them rotate as they come right in. And if a parent's bringing them right in. Because usually if they're in the classroom, that parent's gone with the wind somewhere. On the one day. Or they came on a bus.
Well, if they're on a bus, that parent's nowhere to be found.
Right, but there are some that, yeah, so if you catch them, then you can catch them right away. Go in the classroom.
By the time they walk through the hallways into a classroom.
It's July.
Yeah. I, I would agree that we need to stop them.
And they can just, you know, we can, however they want to do it, when they find one, hold them there or how, whatever that plan would be. Just line them up. And I know there's different, there's probably, I don't know how many doorways in each building that have kids go in.
We're going to have to shut some of their doors. We're going to have to shut some of the doors.
Yeah. Because I, Jeff Edelman called me, I think we ordered fifteen of the scanners.
That sounds about correct.
Because he asked me about how much they provide, yeah. Because I think there's fifteen, so I think that's only three per building.
Yeah, you'd use about a hundred.
Mr. R, we could do it in your building, could we?
Can, but I, I, I don't think they're going to say that the teachers assistants are going to have to do this for us. I think the teachers.
I think it's a rotation.
Equally involved in this.
Absolutely.
Sure.
Absolutely.
You can't volunteer those.
They already have, I guess, that's part of it, so I don't think.
I mean, they're also expressing interest and concern about health. So I, I don't think it would be a tough sell to anybody. You know, especially if it was on a rotation basis.
We want to keep everybody as healthy and safe as possible.
I just, I, to be honest, I think the level of protection, parents do not want to get the call when they're on their way to work. They will add it to their at-home routine if you know. Like if I told you, you're going to get temperature checked at Walmart and you knew before you showed up at Walmart, you will not get in that store unless you take a temperature check. You might roll the dice, but if you had a thermometer at home and you had to do it every single day and you had to go to Walmart, you're going to know, I'm just going to take my temperature here. So that way, I don't waste the gas. I, but I think that if you force that, it's going to go up exponentially.
How many parents even have thermometers at their house? I don't know. I mean, I bet it's not everyone.
And they were hard to get ahold of.
What do you think, Mrs. Esser, do you think everybody has one?
Well, before I say anything, let me preempt my statement by, my rules are different than the district and they're a lot more stringent. So I am required, before they walk in the door, I have to scan them. But I'm different, you know, I don't, I can only have nine kids in a classroom where school districts can have more. So I have a lot more oversight and rules and regs. Um, so when I make my comment, know that that's, it's coming from a lot of oversight. No, families don't. I mean, they went out real, real quick. I think they're just now getting back into Walmart and things like that. School districts, um, you know, we have access to specialty distributors, but they're on back order too right now.
That's exactly.
So, you know, you're kind of in this, you've got things on order and kind of waiting for it to come in. So I think it is a, I hear everything everybody's saying, I agree with it. Um, but I also think it's a logistical issue as well. And it'll have to be worked out.
Since the school nurses here, I'll ask you, are you in favor of face coverings for students?
Uh, theoretically, yes, practically. I don't think it's going to be, I don't, I think it would be more of an issue than a help, to be honest.
When you say issue, do you mean enforcement and?
Enforcement and keeping them on, I, I, everybody keeps saying primary, primary, primary. I, I know those high school kids or the middle school kids. You know, they're, they're not that compliant either. And I just think that they're, you know, and maybe, maybe if they are, when they are moving from one place to another where they expose a lot of people, have a mask. But logistically, then what do you do with the mask once they've been on and take it off again? Or do you have them, you know, I've seen the little things where they're just attached to like a lanyard and hang it on, and just put it on.
A lanyard.
Yeah, or whatever, yeah. Um, so theoretically, yes, would make it much more harmful, but it's just, I can't see it. I can't see it to be practical with that. And, and even, you know, even teachers, when you're one-on-one, they, you know, or whatever, they're close, but it's just.
If I was wearing one in the classroom, I don't know how my students could hear me.
Well, if you think about it, teachers, I've had teachers say to me, I have to talk about this to get my student to understand. And if you're a primary, you're a primary, you do, they, they watch your mouth and try to normalize and all that, so. Um, yeah, I, I just think it would be much practically. Dr. Ken, where do we stand on the face shields and the table dividers? If, if we're considering that, is that something that Tristar can, um, create some of those for us?
They've made about five hundred face shields. But as far as the acrylic dividers, that isn't something that they've done.
Well, I don't, because some of it, and they talk about desks on basements, our lower grades have, they're all at tables.
Yeah, they're at tables.
They're at tables, they're at, they're at odd shaped table or whatever, so. Those kidney tables. Yeah, but even if they're even, kidney tables and other ones that you, those shields might be a good. Because I don't know how you either buy more desks and put them in or buy more of those because you only have probably one on each end and one of those table type things.
I know at CIS, they use those offices as well, correct? Their little divider cubicles.
Because we have a lot of tables in our monsters at CIS. You talked about the high school and all the science labs. They have a bunch of tables on that, so they need some dividers.
And they've used those for years, though, I mean.
So the cardboard things?
Yeah, they pull out, I don't know if the cardboard or plastic.
I don't know. Probably should be, I'm not sure about the.
The sanitizing.
The cleanability of.
The cleanliness and.
The sanitizing.
The effectiveness, the plexiglass type thing would be, and will pile too. Because once I've seen even at the grade school, there's, what they set up, it'd see over.
Yeah, you can see over, they're just, you know, like covering their papers.
Before we go on, well, if we approve these resolutions, you know, I, I think that there are things that most of us would like to add or see amended somehow before we go on.
Well, I have a couple other questions. Um, there were some possible comments about, or especially the high school and maybe middle school, getting two lunch breaks? Are you going to stagger lunch breaks more or less concentration of kids?
They're talking about expanding the lunch, making that a longer period. So it is possible to separate the students from high school.
Okay, was there any conversation about doing that between periods too? I don't know if there's really any way to do, to release some.
More of the talk was limiting their number of stops at the lockers. At the middle school, the girls are going to be coming in first. Four minutes later, the boys are going to be coming into the school. At the end of the day, the girls are released first and then the boys related, released.
I think in between classes, the middle schools also release in seventh or eighth grade at a different time, so there's not so many kids in the hallway.
That's what I, that's what I mean.
At the high school, Dr. Ken, average classroom size, twenty-one, twenty-two?
No.
Students.
Twenty-five. That I talked to a high school teacher today.
Yeah, the average is a special in, numbers figured in. You do have some that are getting close up there to twenty-eight. You have other classes with, some of the students with IUPs. Those numbers are closer to ten to twelve. So when you average it out across the board at the high school, it's about fourteen per class, actually.
For teacher or is that in a classroom?
Totals, students to staff ratio.
Of students to staff, but.
Yes.
So there could be more of that in the classroom.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, wasn't it?
Yes.
So you still have more, you're still, there's still numbers in the classroom.
What, what are you doing as far as lockers again, Dr. Ken? Just, I, and I, it makes sense because there's going to be ten kids around the locker. So are they going to now get assigned to locker this year or?
Right, yes, no, they will be assigned lockers, but they'll visit them less frequently. Only carry their materials with them.
Because we don't allow book bags either, right?
Not stopping there between every period.
Because we do, we do not allow book bags, right?
At the high school, they did not. Now with this, they are reconsidering.
That was going to be my, because you get a certain point where carrying three books, carrying seven books is going to be a little.
My junior and senior year, I didn't go to the locker room. I didn't have a bag.
My school didn't give it that.
Yeah, you have a book bag.
Yeah, it's not a big deal.
So all we really, all we really have is plan, Dr. Ken, regarding fevers. Unless I'm missing something, is that if a student, in regards to student health issues, which are not diagnosed on the second page of first paragraph, as COVID nineteen, the duration of the home stay for a child sent home with a fever and who is then fever free is twenty-four hours without medication and has improvement of all other symptoms is twenty-four hours. To return to school, the child should be transported to school by the parent and must be checked by school personnel. Temperatures may be taken upon return.
That's, is that just a regular illness or is that?
Correct, that's a regular.
That's just a regular, that's just a standard policy for illnesses.
Okay, so what I was going to ask is that, is that happening now? Because it says temperatures may be taken upon return. When a kid's home with a fever for twenty-four hours, are they checked before they go back into the building or?
That depends on, to be honest, some, some parents would know, they've stayed home. Other ones, the teacher will send them down, we'll check up. There's, there's no, there's no set policy that everyone is checked for that. Just they're feeling better and they have a twenty-four hour fever free. But we do have kids that still come back and they find their way to come in.
Mm-hmm.
Because they're obviously not still not feeling good. So to answer your question, no, it isn't going to happen all the time. Yeah. It's on a case by case, case by case basis.
And I think something Mr. Flax said a little bit ago, we went above the governor's requirement. I don't, I think it would be smart and I think it would be sending a very positive message to the community.
I just think that to add a temperature check wouldn't put too much of a hurdle. Uh, would force the parents' hands, guardians' hands to do what they should be doing. Again, with grace to everyone of understanding, getting ahold of thermometers might be a whole different ballgame. But, um, you know, those things, and then also recognizing that this policy isn't set in stone for the next thirty-eight years, the recognition is things are going to change. So if we get, if we have to have an emergency meeting about a temperature policy because it's going off the rails, we can do that. But I do think there is a, trying to set a best practices right up front. And I do think, man, if you could catch just one, it'd be worth it.
One, and then with a, it's got like a one point four transmission rate, so there you go.
I mean, my kid's in the school. If I could say just one, she wouldn't be in contact with one other person with COVID. I'd take that, if we could, you know, again, I understand it won't be a hundred percent effective. Some of it's like chasing the wind, but let's chase it a little bit.
I agree.
So then on the second paragraph, I added that sentence. Student's temperature will also be taken by staff at the beginning of each day. Does that say what you would like it to?
And I think that leaves the administration and the buildings, probably the building principals, to be honest, to figure out how they're going to function at each, each building.
One, one more time, please, Dr. Ken?
Sure. Student's temperature will also be taken, will also be taken by staff at the beginning of each day. I should say each school day?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
And then I think it would be wise to probably get our hands on this, quite a few more thermometers if possible.
Twitch your nose and hope it happens.
I don't think those things are probably very expensive, were they?
About a hundred dollars each.
Eighty-five dollars, well, depending on what you bought, that would end up getting five hundred.
And we had fifteen. Yeah, we'll have to figure out how many we're going to need.
Who went to them from home?
We bought them from home. I recommend it just a little bit more. Not that cheap.
I'd be the only one to touch it though. Yeah, I have a scan one at home.
I think we're ready to proceed then, unless anybody else has a question.
The only other thing on the, the face coverings policy, I do think it's important. One of my fears is the, um.
I think that's the next attachment. I haven't moved that yet.
Oh, okay.
What was that?
The face covering policy.
Put it together.
Yeah, yeah, we were talking about it. Um, just making sure that we're communicating. My fear is that Johnny's going to get sent to school with a face covering because mom and dad are saying this is what we're doing. And in our community, some of the sensibilities around face covering might have gone down to another student. And I would like our teachers and administrators to be on top of, I never thought I'd say this term, but face covering bullying kind of thing of, you know, I, I know what adults have said to other adults at grocery stores who are wearing face masks. I just want to make sure as much as we can that it doesn't become a divisive issue and a bullying issue and a point of contention.
It's crazy, but it's true.
I, it's just going to be, and so I think that's one of those where we respect that parent's choice and, and really make sure that that's honored. Because there's going to be students.
We'll have some that do that.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
And you're going to have students that are trying to honor their parents and getting it from their friends from every direction. That's where I worry they're going to go.
Have we all been contacted from both sides? Will thought out letters that I will not send my, my son or daughter back if you make them wear a face mask to the other side where if they're not all wearing a face mask. So we know whichever decision we make here is wrong.
Well, and I also, you know, the older ones, as soon as they walk in the building.
Yeah.
It's down. It's not the heat, you know, the older ones too.
Yeah.
Exactly right. You know, now that might be not so much, if, if we're continuing in October, November with this, you may find more kids wearing them because the heat's not the issue, but I just, yeah, it's going to be.
I just had a conversation with a parent that said, you know, we're thinking about asking our kids to wear them because that's a family decision and, and I respect that. And I, and they said, one of our kids said, well, we're worried about, we're going to get made fun of. And I thought that needs to be tamped down pretty quickly. And when you're in middle school, that's it.
I get that. I was uncomfortable the first time I went out in public. Sure, I get that. I didn't come to Walmart because they. Yeah. I'm afraid somebody will make fun of me too.
So I just say that, however the administration and teachers handle that, just being aware of it.
Thank you, Dr. Schmees, for adding that. Head Start report.
Um, I, in your packet, I have, um, what my plan, as I sit here today, could possibly be. Um, there is another board meeting though, before we officially start school. So, um, depending on what comes up or what changes happen, I may be presenting you with another plan. Um, I guess just for clarification, when, when I made my comment earlier about us being a little bit different, um, we, our guidance comes from ODH, ODJFS, ODE, the Office of Head Start. And the, the final rule is we must follow the most stringent policy that is out there. So currently, um, while the governor gave K to twelve, um, local control, we still fall under that original governor order. So I can only have nine kids in a classroom. I do have to do temp checks at the door before they enter. We do kind of like a health and safety thing right away. Um, and we've been doing that this summer. And we did catch somebody at the door, um, and they were able to go home, so.
Do you know if they were actually positive?
Yep, no, not COVID related, kids cutting teeth.
Well, okay, yeah, it's probably not going to be as much experience.
Right, which is, um, because our kiddos are a little bit younger and they're still cutting teeth. Um, but, you know, dad was on the way to work.
Will you still be able to have a, students per classroom?
Well, that's why, um, in my packet, I have that modified plan and it's color coded and, and all that. So, um, we've been given a lot of flexibility out of the Office of Head Start in regards to enrollment and attendance, um, this year, as long as our state regulations only allow us so many children in a classroom. So, um, everything that I will submit, our very, our big base grant is due next month. It will also temporary in the hopes that governor orders are lifted and we'll be able to resume our necess, our normal operations. And there's also like the temporary policies and procedures that are all attached in there.
Did your UV machine come in?
Not yet.
You have a Head Start report tonight?
Under TriStar, we reappoint Sandy Mass to the TriStar Advisory Board for a two-year term, running from this August to July of twenty twenty-two.
Thank you, Dr. Ken. It looks like we're ready for an executive session.
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Huber, Mrs. Voorhees.
Mr. Huber?
Yes.
Mrs. Voorhees?
Yes.
Mrs. Gingrich? Mr. Flack?
Yes.
Mr. Sell?
Are we leaving or are we staying here? Now approved the consensus agenda. Any items to be removed? If not approved, remaining consensus agenda items?
Okay, Mr. Sell?
Yes.
Mrs. Voorhees?
Yes.
Mr. Huber?
Yes.
Mr. Flack?
Yes.
Mrs. Gingrich?
What, what was removed?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, under number, item number eight, other business by board slash administration, you need to have an appointment of a delegate, an alternate to the OSB annual business meeting. That would be held on Monday, November the ninth, it'll be twenty twenty.
I'll volunteer for their alternate.
I'm sorry?
I'll volunteer for their alternate.
Okay, I think that customarily is the newest board member that is the delegate. Would you agree to that?
I believe so, I think you're right.
I think. I, I keep going, but I believe, let me make sure, but.
I think I'm gonna go this year as well.
I'd be happy to recommend.
It starts on Sunday, goes Monday and Tuesday, that is usually about a half day.
So it begins on?
Sunday night.
Actually a little earlier on Sunday, they changed that last year.
Right.
Is there, are we still for sure it's gonna happen?
No, at this point it is scheduled to happen.
Okay, I'm, I'm free and would be willing to serve, should my colleagues.
I'll make a motion. Okay, Mr. Huber?
Yes.
Mr. Sell?
Yes.
Mrs. Voorhees?
Yes.
Mrs. Gingrich? Mr. Flack?
Yes.
Next, we're asking for the approval of the following personnel for supplemental contract as a department head, Erica Dries, math at the high school.
I'll make a motion.
A second.
Okay, Mr. Huber?
Yes.
Mrs. Voorhees?
Yes.
Mrs. Gingrich? Mr. Flack?
Yes.
Mr. Sell? I believe that's it, Mr. Sell.
Dr. Ken, anything else you wanna add to talk about?
Just, we're talking about a special board meeting on Thursday at eleven AM.
For the purpose of?
Looking at a November levy.
Okay, thank you. We are staying adjourned, we will be back Thursday at eleven.